Welcome, everyone. It's the Millville Planning Board meeting, November fourteenth. We'll open the meeting with a roll call. Justin?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
And I am here. Chris, Drew, and Preston Juszkiewicz are not available right now. We have a quick meeting tonight. Starting with... We're not going to do our meeting minutes because we don't have enough folks.
Do we have to make, do we have to make a motion to table those?
No.
No.
The chair can table it, yep.
I'm going to table that. How about a planner's update, Jack?
Well, as far as Millville's concerned, I have nothing. I've had a few people call and ask. One asked about another in-law apartment. I gave her all the information. I never heard back. Another person wanted to know about subdividing their parcel. I gave them some information, never heard back. And that's it. It's pretty quiet in the little village.
Um...
Well, I did hear, I did hear from the building commissioner that maybe a decision was made. He didn't term it that way, but he said that they're going to renovate the old town hall.
Yeah.
Well...
He seemed optimistic about it.
That's good.
Yeah. So that was cool. I thought that, I've never been in there. I've heard some, a lot of stories. It was too expensive. It really wasn't fit for a town hall. I don't know. I've never been there, but it looks nice from the outside.
Looks nice on the inside, too.
Yeah. So maybe, right?
Yeah. I know that in terms of a town planner, that things are moving along.
Yes, I can tell you this is that we're still working with that woman, Dylan. She's still interested. The way it's working, and Pam, you might know more than me now, is that Dylan is going to spend a lot of her time in Menden because she's also going to be hired as the zoning enforcement officer. And she's going to staff the ZBA in Menden.
Okay.
The rest of her time will be split amongst Uxbridge and Millville. And I think she's given about eight hours a week to Millville. Not sure of that.
I think it was six.
Okay. And my role will be, at least in Millville, will be, I'm going to go down to one hour, which isn't much, just to help her out and answer questions and show her the ropes a little bit. You'll find, at least I, I've interviewed her like four times now. She's a very savvy young lady. And she, she knows more about zoning than at first glance because she works for a permit, permitting tracking software company. And they track all the permits that everyone does in Massachusetts. Subdivisions, A&amp;Rs, zone changes, special permits, scenic byway, you name it, they track it. So she, she's got the nomenclature down. She just, you know, I don't think she's worked with a board before or with the public as much as we would have liked. But, um, so that's kind of the framework. I can tell you that Uxbridge and Menden have approved the budget for both of us. And I, that's where I'm going to give it to you, Pam.
Yeah, I know Millville's voting on it tonight. So after this, I'll, I'm going to head over to the...
And it's all going to start January second.
Okay. Yeah, and I was able to interview Dylan myself last week and I can concur with everything that Jack has just said. She seems really excited about the opportunity, which I, is, I think something that's also really important. She sees this as a real opportunity.
Yeah, she has a full-time job, so she's still hanging in there with us. And I know she was working with Steve Setti and Uxbridge because a little, I mean, you guys, it hasn't come to your level, but I was operating on a grant from the Department of Revenue. In the grant, all the fiscal part of the grant went through the town of Menden. So I gave Menden an invoice and they paid me through the grant. This will go through the, this new funding by each town, which was decided years ago.
Couple of years back, yep.
Yeah, is going to go through the town of Uxbridge. And her benefits will go through the town of Uxbridge.
Correct.
So she was working with Steve, but there was a death in Steve's family. And he was out all last week, so Steve's the town administrator. I am, they may have talked today for all I know, but I know she wanted to talk to him about the benefit package. That's what it was explained to me. I, so fingers crossed if Millville hops in and she's willing to accept it, I think we got a, a deal. And I would say that that arrangement would last a year and a half.
Yes, it will.
Right? It would last till...
A year and a half, and then we could kind of relook at it and see how it's going.
Right. Ultimately, to get rid of me, that's what you're really trying to do. Let's face it.
We're laying the groundwork so that we can say goodbye to you, Jack.
I... Yeah, it's fine. I'm enjoying it mostly. It's a, a distraction though sometimes. I do have a, a life, believe it or not.
No, really?
So that's what I know.
Any, any questions do you guys have? Jason, I know that you're kind of coming into this like late, so let me know if I can fill you in on any of it.
No, I'm pretty familiar with the arrangement Jack was just talking about. I've been paying attention to the select boards, but the sharing of resources and sharing the budget and sound like a good plan, sound like a good way to keep Jack somewhat occupied and give him, you know, like you said, a, a foot out the door type of thing.
Yeah. Get a more permanent solution for us.
Yeah, and with Dylan, I'm kind of excited to see what she brings to the table, too. So, yeah.
Awesome. All right. The only other thing I have is, so the planning board is required to have a representative of our board to be a part of the capital planning committee. And I think Preston is currently the named person who's part of that committee. We might need to wait until he's available to join one of our meetings to discuss this a little bit further, but I want to put it out there. He's been having some trouble getting to that meeting, it's my understanding, and then we might need to find another member of our board who can attend. It's my understanding that the capital planning committee meets once a month and they do their best to try to arrange those meetings around everybody else on the committee's schedule. So it's not like a set time. If you're not unable to go, they'll try to find a time when somebody is available to come. But it is really important that a planning board representative be a part of it.
I think, I can, I can certainly volunteer for that. You know, if, if Preston's unable to make, to make those, I can do that.
Okay. That'd be great. I, I want to check in with him. I, I've heard from the capital planning committee that he's been unable to come and they've asked us to, to bring it up. And so I don't want to just boot off if, if there's...
No, 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 I understand. So, you know, I, I'm waiting in the wings for that then. So...
Does it need to be one assigned person or can it just be, you know, as needed?
That's a great question. I'm, I'm not sure.
Because I mean, I, I don't know what I'd bring to the table, but if I could go, I would go. I don't have an issue.
Sometimes these committees...
I take very good notes.
Sometimes these committees allow alternates. I don't know about Millville.
Just then between the five of us, at least we haven't...
Well, that might be a little too much, but...
Yeah, just if somebody from the group could...
Right. I don't know what Millville's rules are.
What do you think? What is, what are they looking to get from having a planning board member there? What, what's the benefit? What's the reason? What?
Um, well, I, I think inherently the capital planning has to do with planning in, in general. And so having a member of, I think it's several different boards that they, the way they've built the committee has to have representatives of different boards part of it. And then they have a couple of, I think they have a couple of public people as, as well as part of the committee. I don't think it's just other departments right now, but I'm really not sure.
I mean, not, not, not having been on it, but you know, just the nature of capital planning, you know, or big ticket items, you know, that, that, that may need some, you know, planning observation.
Right.
I would imagine that the rehabbing of the town hall was probably something that got brought up at this meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And from what I'm hearing about the school, the BMR was selected for, I don't remember what program that was on, but there's been some starting to be some conversation about what we're doing with the, the...
With the school building. Yep, exactly.
So that's why I wasn't sure.
It's usually the buildings. It can be public safety. Usually, you know, they, they have some kind of system for purchasing vehicles because they're pretty big dollars, especially the fire department. That kind of stuff. And then you map it out. You have a contingency for emergencies and that kind of stuff. I, I've never been on one, but that's what I imagine.
All right. Well, I'll see if I can get a little bit more information about whether we can attach an alternate to the board as well and we'll make a note to follow up with, about this on our, at our next meeting with Preston and, and see what's going on there.
Sure.
I mean, otherwise, that's what I got, Jack. Do you have anything else?
Well, I thought Pam confused since we've only been on for seventeen minutes, but maybe you could go over your list of your to-do list?
My wish list, yes. I would love to do that.
And we, but before we get into that, because we're talking about like other board responsibilities, I, I sent in my denial to like continue being the CMRPC representative to the town administrator a very long time ago. I, I still get their, I still get their emails. But it's, it might be time for, for someone else to, to get those emails.
Okay. Did we? We haven't picked somebody for this year to be on it?
Not since I've been here. For Jason, CMRPC is Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. Every town is tied to a regional planning commission. I think there's thirteen in the Commonwealth. And every town, the planning board selects a member and the board of selectmen or the city council or mayor, I don't know how in the city, they select a member. And so that there's two members that can attend the meetings and vote. And it's pretty interesting stuff. So, you know, it's out of Worcester. Now, I don't know if there's Zoom meetings. I, I, I haven't been involved with, I've been involved with CMRPC, but not with the commission itself.
We, we did, we did Zoom meetings back when COVID was like a big thing. You know, but I, I haven't attended one in a very long time.
Yeah. Last time I did one, it was Zoom, but that was probably last year.
Might be something Pam's interested in, too.
I've done it a few times, but yeah.
No, I meant the other Pam.
Oh, yeah, the other Pam might want to...
New Pam.
New Pam? Because she's on, so let us know if you're interested.
Okay, I will think about it. I'm trying to get my picture, but I don't know how. But I will think about that. I have actually, I get their emails because I was interested in trying to find a way to get bus service from the WRTA, like Northbridge has, go down 122.
Yeah.
They said basically it's not going to happen. I tried.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard in the small towns.
Yeah. Um, well, going back to my wish list, I think when we, when we started all of this process in, in trying to work with Uxbridge and, and Menden to try to find a way to bring on a planner, and we brought Jack on and, and you kindly asked me in that first week to put together a wish list of, of what we would like to see happen as part of our, you know, with our board with a new planner. And at the time, my number one, my number one was to get a full board. So thanks, Jack. We, we've checked that on the list. But then after that, I wanted to try to, to think about some of our, what are our other needs? And, and over the five years or so that I've been on this board, I've, I've started a small collection of the issues that come up that we've either not had the time or the resources to be able to address. And, you know, a lot of them include language and updates related, related to some of the bylaws that we have in town. Specifically, I had on my list that we needed to look at the signs bylaw and the stormwater management bylaw because they had, there's drafts of them that have been written over the last couple of years that have just never moved forward. And it would be great to have a professional to kind of help us take a look at that. And I know at one point when we had Gabe from CMRPC, he mentioned that there was some grants that might be available to us to have CMRPC help us with some of these bylaw updates. So I, I think I'd like to, to look into being able to, to do that with CMRPC.
I think the stormwater would be very good.
Yeah.
There's new state regs that you are supposed to adhere to, MS fours. And Uxbridge does a very good job at it. Menden, not so good. And you guys, I think it's non-existent. Well, we haven't really had anything, though.
Yeah.
But anyway, it, it's, I think that would be important and they're probably well-versed in it as well, I assume.
I'm sure. And while I'm thinking about bylaws, Jack, I mean, in your short time here, besides these two, because I know they've come up, or at least the signs one has come up, the stormwater one, it was just, I found language that of a, of a start to a draft. Are there other bylaws that, that you've come across of ours that...
Well, I did, you know, I, and Peter had asked me, I've gone through, CM RPC did what they call a diagnostic of your zoning bylaw, and it's a very good...
It's, it's huge. And I, I mean, this is where some of this, yeah, we have this report that kind of said these ones are, are really bad. And these ones are kind of bad.
And at least when I, I talked to you early on, and when I talked to Peter early on, you know, he suggested, why don't we do the easy ones first?
Yep.
Because you guys have probably been to town meeting. I've never been to Millville town meeting, but I've been to too many town meetings and they can get crazy. And they get very noogie about zone changes.
Sometimes they can, yeah.
Yeah, and there's kind of ways to get past that a little bit, but you've got to gain the trust that the planning board knows what they're doing and they trust you. And that, that's a hard thing to do when you keep changing members and da, 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 da.
Yep.
I can help with that. I can guide Dylan, but I would use that diagnostic and really pour through it. You know, we need to have a good process. We need to have updated definitions. I think you need to have more specific language regarding solar and the marijuana business and all that stuff.
Yeah, I have notes about that, too. It came up at one point about small-scale solar, but we don't have bylaws related to small-scale solar in our town. And, and it's come up a couple of times. And I agree, yeah. And I know we've attempted, oh, this is one of my first projects I think I ever worked on on the board was, we had some definitions that we were looking to update, but couldn't come to a consensus. And so those were scrapped. So I, I think it's time to, to revisit some of these things. Some of it was very low-hanging fruit, as Jack said, you know, some of the easy things.
Yeah.
And yeah, so I have a copy of that zoning diagnostic as well. And then I know there was just some, some of our written procedures that, or some of our procedures are not necessarily written down that we've, I've been able to find in some cases, too. So I think that that's another thing. And that, that's something that Dylan brought up on our, in our interview with her, that she'd be interested in helping to not just help us put procedures together where there aren't any, but to make sure they're in line with what the other towns are doing as well.
Yep. Now with procedures for the board, that does not need to go to town meeting. When, when the planning board is doing any kind of rules and regulations, which is where procedures would fall under, it takes a public hearing of the planning board and you vote. You vote whether to approve it, amend it or not, or deny it.
Okay.
Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you've already worked months and months on it and you're ready to go, but, but that does not need to go to town meeting. And, and your subdivision bylaws are part of that. Subdivision bylaws are rules and regulations. They do not go to town meeting.
Okay.
That, and a lot of people question that and challenge that, but it's clear. Clear as night and day in at least my world. So that's something you could look at, too.
Yeah, agreed. Um, Justin, Jason, do you have any thoughts on, on our wish list?
Oh, the subdivision rules, isn't that something that might be coming up in the next six months to a year?
What do you mean, Jason? I'm sorry.
Is, I thought you had mentioned something about somebody made a purchase on Thayer Street.
That, that might come up. Alan Engineering called me a couple of months now ago and said their client had purchased it. And they, I gave him everything I had from previous, from the previous attempts at the land. And I haven't heard back since.
So I think that's something that we might want to get, you know, gamed up for as far as knowing
Absolutely.
what we need. As opposed to being reactionary, let's be proactive on it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Because once they apply, they apply.
Yep.
And then their grandfather would.
So maybe that's something that we could give Dylan right out of the gate.
I love it. Another thing is, right out of the gate, and it's a simple thing, and I think she can do a very good job, is transposing your zoning bylaw to a Word document. Right now, the only thing anybody can find is a PDF.
I can't think of that.
Same way in Menden as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, give that, give that to me. I'll do it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll, I'll have my kids do it. Like, that's not something we need to have Dylan spend time with.
No. I don't have the song.
I agree. Let's, let Pam's kid do it.
I mean, we talked, we talked about that, that, you know, we might have to shoulder some, like, some of the smaller clerical things so that we use her time, you know, as, you know, her thinking as a planner.
Yeah.
All right, but I will make a note, though. So we're interested in looking at our subdivision bylaws first. We're interested on our own to figure out how we can get a, like a Google Doc of our bylaws. And then maybe we pull out that diagnostic to take a look at some of our, our other town bylaws that are, be good for us to, to go through.
Do you have that diagnostic electronically?
I do.
Maybe you want to pass it on. Include me. I only have the hard copy.
I'm going to forward, I'm going to forward this wish list that I sent to you back then to everyone because it has, it has a, a couple of other documents attached to it as well that I know at least Jason doesn't have, and I'm not sure that Justin does.
I think I have a copy of the diagnostic somewhere, but if you were...
I mean, when I worked in the town in Hudson, my last stop, we had hired someone to do a diagnostic and they did a very, very professional job. And CMRPCs was right up there, I have to say. So I was very happy about that. And just so you know, I left and all the changes that we came up with, it got defeated at town meeting. So it's not easy. It's not easy.
It's not always easy. We have had some luck. We, we did make some adjustments a few years back when we had Sarah
Oh, yeah.
Planner. She helped us and we did some related to like parking and...
Parking and the updated schedules for tickets and, and things like that.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a little easier. You can wrap yourself around that pretty easy. Maybe they, you know, that's the way you got to do it.
Yeah.
Some other ways, you know, you can do the whole thing. But when you're at a town meeting and people start editing, you know, a forty-page document, it's craziness. It's absolute craziness.
Yeah, it can be. All right. So our next meeting date would be the twenty-eighth at six. Does that date work for everyone?
It does.
Everyone on this call, anyway. I'll send it to everyone else.
Yeah, now, if we have nothing, do you still want to meet to have these chats? It's fine with me. I'm just asking. I think the twenty-eighth, I'm going to have to be virtual. Well, you guys are always virtual.
Always virtual. I'm, my...
Just Menden has their planning board meeting the same night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, in my opinion, I, I'd like to meet, even if it's just for a bit to either, you know, double check on some of these lists, or I, I just want to get back into the habit of having our meetings every couple of weeks. And so it's like a tough thing to get folks to, to come to our meetings, anyway.
Yep. Yeah, I'm all, I'm all for, I'm all for having it. Hopefully, you know, we can, we can chat with Preston. And, and, you know, check a couple of boxes.
Yep, exactly.
If one of you wanted to reach out to Preston, it'd be a good thing then for the twenty-eighth.
All right, will do.
I wonder if Peter would come. We'll also know whether the positions got funded or not.
Yes, we'll have an update on that, too.
Speaking of funding and stuff, when, when do we do our board budget? Is that coming up or do we do it already?
This, this board budget, we didn't do one this past time unless, Jack, did you submit it?
No.
Yeah.
Peter did it.
Yeah, I think Peter did it. I think he just carried things over. I never got any forms to this year. But generally, we would have to have it in the beginning, near the beginning of the year so that the... So that the finance committee has it as they're kind of going through everything.
I'll be in on Wednesday. Hopefully Peter's there and I'll ask him.
Okay.
Or I can ask, um, uh. What's her, Marcia might know.
Okay. Yeah, cause you're right, Justin. In the past, we've, we've filled it out and submitted it, but.
Yeah, I mean, it was kind of carryover stuff too. I mean, we don't do anything radical, but you know, there was a lot of, you know. Job posting money and.
Yeah.
Stuff.
All right, anything else?
It's Pam.
Hello, I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good. I'll laugh. I'll get the agenda ready. Maybe something will come up. We'll get, we have a little bit of homework to do.
Perfect. All right, a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second it.
All right. All in favor? Justin?
Aye.
Aye.
I say aye. All right, everyone. Have a great week.
All right.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.